Meeting come to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the 14th meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for our commission's reporter. And if you're here to testify on any matters on the agenda, please come forward, be sworn in, and identify yourself and spell your name for the commission reporter. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Yes Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the 32nd and 35th meetings as previously circulated.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes of the 32nd and the 35th meeting are approved. Commissioners, we have a request to add on to today's agenda.
Yes Chair. Motion to add on Agenda Item 8A, Request Number 19-16443 from HM, Palpasal and Associates.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Request number 19-16443 is approved. That will be Agenda Item Number 8A. Going into the public hearing, calling Agenda Item Number 1, Application Number 19-15236 from Jungle Bar LLC.
Good afternoon Chairman O'Donnell, Members of Honolulu.
Please, please sit down gentlemen. Thank you.
I'm James H. Kweli, I represent Jungle Bar. With me today is Justin Alexander, Member Manager for Jungle Bar.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
Thank you Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received 39 written protests from registered voters within 500 feet of the proposed premises, 19 written protests from owners and lessees within 500 feet of the proposed premises, representing respectively 2.3% and 1.1% of the respective group. Applicant has received no letters of support and has met statutory requirements for the submission of his application.
Thank you. I see we do have some people that have signed up to testify on this matter. So I will call Mr. Robert Behr.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
With your permission before we begin, Mr. Alexander would like to make a statement to the commission, if that's okay.
Point of order, I don't believe, I believe we need to go through the process and then you can address the statements unless, or unless you're going to withdraw your application.
Not withdrawing the form.
Okay. We will follow, we will follow the agenda. You will get your chance to represent your opinion on the protest.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay. So can we have Robert Behr? Please come forward. I will make this.
I'll run a three-minute timer. I'll let you know when one minute remains and I'm going to swear you in now. Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of pictures if I could have those out. Please give them to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a seat. Yes, please sit down. Make yourself comfortable. We are only an administrative commission, not a court of law, so please make yourself comfortable.
Go ahead sir.
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today concerning the licensing change in our community. If approved, this change will dramatically affect our ability to live and relax in our home. Due to our proximity to this business, we are certain that an evening of sitting down in our living room to relax, read, watch TV, or socialize will be impossible. My wife and I live at 2462 Cohio Avenue in Waikiki. We are here to express our objection to the application for liquor and stage license by the Jungle Bar. There are several reasons for our objection, but our primary complaint is noise pollution. We both live and work in Honolulu with hours that require we get up at approximately 4:00 a.m. In order for us to be at our best, for our employers, for the people that we work with, it is important that we wrap up our evening at about 10:00 p.m. Our apartment complex even has quiet hours between 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. When we moved into our apartment four years ago, the location seeking this additional permit was a parking lot for the individuals who lived inside the permanent structure on this lot. Our lifestyle was aligned with theirs. We believe that everyone residing in the Ebside apartment complex has a greater interest in any licensing changes for this establishment than the great general public due to the location's proximity to our homes. Our living room is approximately 45 feet from this lot. Our immediate neighbors include couples, include a couple of hotels, so we welcome a sizable number of visitors each month. But our area also consists of many families, working people, some with school-aged children. This parking lot was converted into an outdoor food truck area about 18 months ago. Since this time, there's been a significant increase in noise coming from this lot. The food truck operators have not demonstrated an abundance of respect for the families of this community. They've held live radio remotes broadcast that included the use of individuals with microphones blaring questions out to people walking by on the sidewalk and even across the street. Recently, they've also had onsite musical entertainers and a tent stage with amplified musical equipment, which they are now requesting to do legally. At times, the volume of this equipment has been loud enough to dwarf the television inside our own living room. Even though we've truly enjoyed the music of one of the entertainers, we do not wish to be constantly inundated with their musical choices. There are times that we want to talk, watch TV, visit with neighbors and friends, play board games, read, rest, and sleep without interference from the business across the street.
Please summarize.
They've been doing a lot, a lot of the noise and in talking with a lot of our neighbors in the building, it's just, it's not something that we really enjoy. It's been difficult, but again and again, when we've asked or talked to them about doing anything different, it's not met with any respect at all.
Thank you.
And we're very, very, you'll see in the pictures, we are, we overlook the property. There's no walls.
We appreciate you providing that.
There's no walls, there's no, I mean, it's an open food truck.
We understand. Thank you for your time. I think you're welcome.
Very much.
Colleen Sanchez. Can I leave a copy?
Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Colleen Sanchez. I live at 222 Lilly O'Callaghan Avenue.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
Okay. The reason I'm here tonight is because I opposed this application due to events that took place for a great part of the fall right through January. This business had live music several times over the course of that time period. It was so loud, even if you closed your windows, and most of us have jealousy windows in our neighborhood, you could not listen to someone speak, listen to your TV music, you certainly couldn't read. It was so loud one night, so many people tried to compensate by turning up their volumes. The building felt like it was literally shaking. Near this business are mainly residential buildings. And like I said, many have jealousy windows. We all have the noise. Most of us don't have air conditioning. At a minimum, even if you just take in the apartment buildings within 300 feet of this business, there are over 400 units facing or semi-facing that said business that would be affected by this. We have small children in our building, we have retirees, we have a lot of working folks that do shift work. We did choose to live in a city, we know it's noisy, but we didn't choose a new business to come in and have live music. Our building manager went over there two weeks ago and spoke to the staff and was told that their permit was so they could have live music seven nights a week, not just the once or twice that they had previously done. So this is what I and most of the people in our building and surrounding neighbors feel that would be the negative effects if this permit is granted. We'll no longer have any choice to what we listen to in our own homes. We won't be able to go out on our own eyes. Extreme noise levels equals extreme stress. There's so many studies out there that show that. Our property value is going to go down. This was a small residential one-story home. They've taken a 50 by 50-foot side yard and there are now three food trucks and an ice cream stand on it. If they have a live band, where are the people going to go? Are they going to be out on the streets? They haven't been good neighbors. We've made lots of attempts to speak to the owner, we could never get ahold of the owner. We haven't felt we've had any respect at all as a community from this owner. We just don't want it to ruin our ability to enjoy our own homes like we have been able to do in the past. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Can we have Mr. David Beasley?
Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hi ladies and gentlemen of the Liquor Commission. My name is David Beasley. I'm Director of the Board at Cohio, Waikiki, 2465 Cohio, otherwise known at Cohio at Waikiki. The reason we're here is because these people have already told you most of those reasons about the noise complaints, and that's mainly it. You know, the residents, I represent about 180 units, and the residents have a right to peaceful enjoyment of the property. And granting the right to loud music in open-air establishment inhibits that enjoyment. And like they said, you know, we have our TV on, you have to turn your TV up louder just because of the music that's coming from outside. And, you know, I wasn't able even to do that personally. So I went down to enjoy the music. And I was very surprised to find that the amplifier they were using was very small in comparison to what I've seen at live music venues. So this property acts like an amphitheater, if you will, resonating through all the large condominiums in that area. You know, I even had a couple of my neighbors tell me that they called 911 and they could not hear, the 911 operators could not hear what they were complaining about because the music was so loud coming into the phones. You know, we've, we've been over the case and I, and I think that you guys know that, you know, all types of people live in Waikiki, people with children, and, you know, we want to respect and support the business ventures of the property, understand why it's happening, but for, you know, seven nights of live music, you know, that seems kind of like it can't be done. We wouldn't be able to enjoy our lives. Our lives would be surrounded by whatever they're playing at that time. And, you know, I'm, I'm also in a band. I love loud music, but only inside. That's all.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, I will hear from the applicant. Would you like to address the concerns of the community?
Yes, Mr. Alexander, please.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Justin Alexander. I'm the applicant, but I'm also the landowner. So I wanted, I've already spoken to a couple of you before. My number is open and available and I can give it to anybody here who has any issues, and I've already given it earlier today. What I want to say is that first I want to apologize for the loud music. I do know that there were, from my understanding, three days that music was played illegally with, with, with the speaker. That was not with my consent and I was not part of that. I've had a couple tenants that I've had to change and let go because they're just, they're not following the rules. This is one of the reasons that I'm putting in my own pizza truck, is because we just, it'd be much easier to monitor and control. So for that loud music, I am sorry. And I want everyone to know too that I would.
Please address the commission.
Sorry, I will give my name and number and they can talk to me. And I, a lot of the property owners, Sam Gilbert, different people that own properties in that area, I have worked with them to do the best for the property and I'm open. So I do want to apologize for that. I do want to say also that we, we do not want to have any live music. We do not want to have music at the venue, or at the location, because I understand, I hear what people are saying, and we do not want that. What I really would like to have is to be able to sell beer and wine with my pizza at the location. We want to do early hours, we're usually closed by 9:00. We want to do a last call at 8:30, close by 9:00. And so that is really, that is what we want to do. Serve a high-end gourmet pizza and be able to sell beer. It'll be local Hawaiian beer. And so I just want to address that. And I, there have been some issues, like I said, some of the tenants I've had that I've let go, and we've gone through that process, but, but there will be no live music.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes Chair. My concern to, I mean, in addition to the concern from the community, this is a public commission, you know, we are appointed by the mayor, who's elected by these folks. And so that's a very big concern for us, is that their peace and quiet, that their entitled to is being disturbed already by you without the presence of alcohol. So our concern is that adding alcohol to that will make it worse for them, not better. However, with a liquor license, we are able to put limitations on you and have more control over what is occurring on the licensed premises, including music, noise, hours of operation. So those are our concerns, but also the safety of the public. Looking at the floor plan and the maps that you folks have, you know, it's very open air, the fence is not high enough to prevent passing drinks out onto the street. So perhaps you can address that concern.
Great. Well, the property is not, it hasn't been built to compliance yet because we've been waiting on the, on the status of the license. But we, we have a wrought iron fence that wraps around the corner on Kapuni that will continue all the way to the middle of the plantation house and it'll be closed off, no access. That's a six-foot fence, that's where the bathroom will be. And then in the front, we will have, we got to, we've got to adhere to the Waikiki Special District design standards. And, you know, we do have a Waikiki Special District permit, a minor one, that will take some modification depending on the fences we put in. So I've got to, I've got to comply with those standards, but we do want to make it where we will have a small entrance at the corner of the property and that will be the only entrance where people will be able to access.
Do we have any further questions? Well, I have one question, Ms. Alexander. Because you are the property owner and that's a valuable piece of property in its location, what are your long-term projections or goals for that property?
Well, the long-term goal is we're, we're going to be, we're going to own that property forever, as far as I'm concerned. So as far as communicating with my neighbors and the community, that's vital, that's very important. That's why I want to give out my number, regardless of the status of the, this application, I want to give my number so they can reach me personally. You know, and it does make me upset too that some of my tenants may have disrespected you or acted the way they did. So, but our long-term is to hold on to that property and I want to give it to my kids.
Good. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or a type of action?
I just, I, I.
Vice Chair, Callum Hall.
Thank you. I, I recall this license only because of the issues that were raised in the preliminary that I had addressed to you, as well as the location and how the setup was. And looking at it from what was presented to us, I didn't realize the close proximity of the homes, how close it is. I mean, in one of these photos, I'm literally looking at their balcony overlooking your establishment. And the thing that I recall from, from the first hearing that we had, and it was represented to us that there were no neighbor issues with the current operations that you were running. That was represented to us in the first hearing. After receiving these protests and seeing the amount of interest that these residents have about your property, there's, there's obviously a disconnect. You're making that, you're reaching out to them now and apologizing to them now for operations that have been happening for 18 months. And I understand in the previous, in the previous hearing, you represented that this, this establishment was owned by your family previously?
Yes. Well, let's clarify that. This, the Pizza Hut is a new operation. There are two operations on the property now. That's not Mr. Alexander's operations. The property.
The property.
The property is owned by Ms. Alexander.
Which she is the landlord, correct?
That's correct.
For the rest of the tenants, meaning that you take an ownership for the tenants that are there as well, including their condo. So to, to be here to apologize to them 18 months later and offer a remedy now, rather than then, knowing that you have a longevity life within this neighborhood, is a little disconnect, is what I'm trying to say, is that there's no, there's a disconnection because in order for your business to be successful, you would want your neighbors to enjoy the fellowship or what you have to offer that your business has. You don't want them opposing your business because that's going to be very difficult for you as well. So I just wanted to make that comment because like I said, from the first hearing to what it is now, there's been discrepancies in what's been happening. Also, with the site plan that we had discussed in the first hearing, the representations that were made about the fencing were represented as if it was already there. And that's on the map that you gave us. So I had assumed that that wrought iron which I had questioned in the first hearing had continued all the way. And in this picture here that I'm seeing, which I'm assuming nothing changed, there's planters in lieu of a fence, rather than what we, what was discussed in the first hearing.
Yeah, the planters aren't, that's not, the planters are only a piece of the fence because you have to have hedges in front of the fence according to Waikiki's Special District guidelines. That won't be the fence. I have moved that out now, it's temporary, but that, that will not be the fence that we're putting in. The planters will actually be pushed back against, we're going to have planters because we have to have a, we have to landscape. So along the brick wall, we're also going to have planters and different vegetation that we're, that we'll reevaluate.
But based on my notes that I have from the last hearing, I questioned the barricades within the property and I distinctly recall the fence all the way because I questioned the entrance of where that fence would be opening. And we knew it was a broad opening fence, that the fence line, I assumed, had continued. But like I said, we're seeing planters instead. So that's also indicated in your drawing that you gave us. So I don't know, I'm assuming the drawing you're giving us is a future of what you potentially would like to do rather than what's currently established.
It is. And the same with the bathrooms that we want to put in, in the AD compliance ramp and all of that.
See, so.
But we, there is also, we have the proposed site plan, but I also believe there was an existing site plan that was submitted.
And was that submitted? Council, do you have that exhibit?
No, I just have the proposed.
So we have a.
We have two exhibits.
Exhibit A and Exhibit B. There was one that was submitted, which I believe you, you questioned during the first hearing.
Yeah, which was the first thing.
That was, that's the existing site plan.
Yeah, and there, so there's a, seems to be a disconnect between the two. One that shows, you know, the pizza that's going in with an existing fence, and Exhibit B, which looks like it may be a more updated plan, but the pizza isn't shown. And it talks about closing off the fence, as you mentioned, with closing off the fence in respect to, yeah, tying it into the existing building. That's the.
For safety and for control, just how Alexander will be putting in the fence. It's not there, right?
Well, our position here is to render a decision based on what's presented to us. And what's presented to us should be what it's going to be. And make that presentation. There's a lot of, there's a lot of establishments built out that we don't physically get to see and we base it on a floor plan that says this is where the designated bar is going to be, such and such. The reason why I'm saying that is the importance of that has a lot to do with the location and what we're looking at because it's not an enclosed environment. So there's other factors that apply to this property that we're looking for that are safeguards that we're now finding out later on that there's discrepancies on what we want, what we thought we saw, what we think we're going to see. The bathrooms are not where they're going to be, or there's no access, or to the, you know, now we're going to take half of a house, or I don't know what's happening, there's a fence that prevents you from going to the house.
The house is split up into four 250 square foot studios, as of the 90. Each studio has its own electric meter and gas meter. So they're individual.
So this, the portion on Exhibit A that includes an office storage.
Yeah.
Is it part of the house?
That is part of the house.
Okay. In, and maybe you're not privy to this, to this information, but presented, what, what they've presented to us looks to be present photos of the property. The present photo that I'm referring to, there's a gate blocking to enter into the restroom, which on your Exhibit A, it would be a gate going to the public restroom.
No, the, the public rest, the public restroom is when you're looking at that picture you just showed me.
I'm, I'm looking at the bottom picture to the right.
Yeah.
Going to that house, there's a gate.
This little gate is just to block people from going in to where, because we have a, we have a permitted support kitchen in one of the units through Department of Health to prep food. You can't cook there, you have to take it to the truck. For that permitted support kitchen, there's a gate to block that. This door you see here is the door that is the access to the bathroom. And it's not blocked.
On your Exhibit A, there doesn't show a gate for the bathroom.
You mean a, a gate to stop people from walking behind the food trucks?
Your exhibit on what you presented to us is not what appears to be in the picture. Is, is there a key here? Am I missing something?
The only gate is this one here that we had put in because we had had people, homeless, actually sleeping back there. So we just put that up. This house, that door is the access to the, to the unit.
Yeah, so is this little fence, is that keeping people from going from here to the bathroom?
No, that is keeping people from going into the support kitchen and behind the food trucks.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because that's keeping people from going into the kitchen and then behind the food trucks. The bathroom is before that, on the Cohio side, right here. You can't really see in this picture, but you can see a little bit of the door.
I'm sorry, so I mean, so once again, our confusion is that, I mean, in the investigative report, it points to Exhibit B, which talks about the premise that you are coming in for. Exhibit B, again, on our plans that we have, do not show your pizza trucks and whatnot. We have Exhibit A, which we're assuming is existing.
Yeah, can I see Exhibit B?
In the first hearing, we also had a little confusion with the correct Exhibit B.
Yeah, but you seemed that that's fair.
Commissioners, perhaps we should have somebody for licensing?
Yeah.
Could we have licensing supervised or?
I think they're going to, they're going to bring forward the investigator.
The investigator, yes. Tom, please come forward.
Then we'll zip you.
If this was the hole of the gate that was here, so we, we just.
I don't need to swear you, I'd ask you to identify yourself.
People coming in, there's also a fire extinguisher here and they could access it into the tri. So I think a little less, because if not, they could just.
Okay, if I can explain.
We would like to hear from the investigator first.
Okay, Ms. Hall.
What are we looking at here? And what is the discrepancy between what was presented to us at the preliminary hearing and what we're viewing at this particular time? and what we're viewing at this particular time?
So, um, Exhibit B, what the, the original report will be the plan that was submitted without the location of the pizza truck. And the one that was recently submitted, the yellow would be the, where the pizza truck would be. When I went up there, it appeared that it, it wasn't built out to the way that they need it to be built out yet, and that was stated in the report. The reasoning was they weren't sure if the license was gonna be approved to proceed.
But how can we approve something if we don't have it, what we're approving in front of us?
And point of order, um, whatever the commission approves, whatever floor plan we approve, including the positioning of tables, of food trucks, of anything, that's what we are approving. So any changes to that need to be approved by us first. So you need to come back and ask us, and we can approve them or not. And if you're found in violation, i.e. you've made unauthorized changes to your floor plan, then that is a potential violation to you, with a fine of up to two thousand dollars per violation, or suspension or revocation of your license. So the scrutiny we're going through right now, which we're not pleased about, because we would like to see a real floor plan, the one that we're gonna approve, uh, is for your benefit as well, unless you want to rack up fines every night of the week.
No.
So, Councilor, let me ask you a question. What is your pleasure? Do you wanna proceed?
Yes, I think, yeah, with respect to the gate, I'm, I'm finding out what's happened to the gate. Originally, there was a gate shown, um, a little bit further in, but they found that that gate was not workable. The gate was here. So on the picture, the, the gate was moved out here. So we'll revise that and submit a, a corrected floor plan, if that's okay.
Okay, then, you asking for, uh, continuance? That's why I asked you the question?
Yes, exactly.
For your pleasure, because you're not prepared for us to make a decision.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, also, we would like to know if you have an existing gate shown there. You represented that you're gonna put in a larger, bigger gate, a six-foot gate or whatnot, if that can be, or if we're gonna leave the existing gate.
Yeah, I believe that gate is a little, a little over five feet.
Okay, I mean, it, it's, you have to tell us what you're gonna install, I mean, prior to re-receiving your license, right? So, address that, um, if there are landscape concerns with your Waikiki Special District permit, um, that should be represented as well. You need an accurate plan you need to look at.
So then I'll, I'll just have to, I will do that, I'll, because I, I'll go into DPP for my minor permit and talk with them, and just make sure that everything is in compliance on the DPP side.
Yes, and you should represent that in your plan to us.
So in the meantime, we would expect that you are not serving any alcohol, or?
No. They haven't opened yet. They're not in operation.
Oh, they haven't op-
No, they have not opened yet.
Well, what, what is the picture I'm looking at with all the food trucks and the umbrellas and, and things like that?
The two, two trucks-
That represents to me that you are actually open.
The, the two trucks that I leased to, Hula Dog and the Steak Plate, they are open.
They are open.
The pizza truck is not open. Even, even today, we, we were working on it.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, the other two are just-
Are you, as the landlord, allowing them to BYOB?
No, no, I'm not allowing that.
I just wanted to state it further. Okay, very good. Commissioners, what is-
Mr. Lee, how much time do you need?
Um, one week.
Sure?
Yes, I think we need to be noted as well.
Motion, motion to continue. Application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six to May ninth.
And could we have the public hearing kept open? Thank you very much.
Second.
Moving second, follow in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six is continued for one week, and the public hearing will be kept open.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. I'd like to say too, anyone who wants my number, I would gladly give it to you.
Okay, moving on, following agenda item number two. Take a short recess on the hour of your duty.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. You folks are welcome to go speak in the lobby.
One way out.
Ahooey ho. We ready to proceed? Okay. Calling agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-five from R International Inc. Mr. Luke.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tomorrow night is Mr. Takahaki Nakajima. He's the manager. Spelling has been provided. He is present with Council Wayne Luke. We have to change this to the investigator's report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rai.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this matter was continued from the April twenty-fifth meeting. Public hearing kept open due to applicant's non-compliance related to filing, the filing of his proof of mailing. Uh, in order to address the issue with the non, uh, non-compliance with HRS two-eighty-one fifty-seven C, uh, administration proposes that the commission has two options in this respect. The first option would be to cancel the public hearing and have the applicant redo mail out of the notices. Or the second option would be to keep the public hearing open and continue the matter to the May sixteenth meeting, which will allow the filed proof of mailing to be on file and available for public review for seven business days from the date of the public disclosure, which is made at this meeting, of the late proof of, uh, mailing filing. Uh, this application has received zero written protests and zero letters in support.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing now, Mr. Luke, what's your pleasure?
I would prefer the two weeks.
Very good. Commissioners-
Thank you.
Motion to, um, continue. Application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-five to May sixteenth. Public hearing kept open.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sixteen.
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 Sixteen, one-six.
Everyone said sixteen.
Very good. On a Thursday.
Thank you.
Same time, same place. Agenda item number two, application one, one-nine dash one-five-two-three-five is continued to May sixteenth with the public hearing kept open. Thank you very much. These are special license applications. Calling agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-two for Free Spirits LLC. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Niogota appearing on behalf of Free Spirits LLC. To my right is Matthew Choi, manager. I have one correction to the investigative report.
Thank you.
Uh, in regards to the security, uh, the report references eight Howard Hughes security. It's actually eight private security in addition to the six HPD off-duty officers. So instead of Howard Hughes security, it's private security.
Before I ask for the commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, in the back, we have plenty of seats available in the front. If you'd like to watch, if you'd like to watch the movie, come, come closer to, to the action. Thank you, Mr. Z. There'll be no testing, so don't worry.
Sit in the back, you'll get caught on.
Okay, commissioners?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gota, why don't you walk us through your event?
Uh, the event's called How's It From Hawaii? It's gonna be a Hawaiian music concert at the Vovo Lot off Coral Street. Twenty-one and over. It's in like a little enclosed lot.
Perfect. How many people are you expecting?
Uh, two thousand over the course of two nights. It's about a thousand people a night.
This is right behind us. Coral and-
Coral and-
Nimitz, yeah.
Oahu.
Oahu.
Oahu, yeah.
You've done events at this venue before.
Not at this venue, this is the first one.
Okay.
But it's right across from itself.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-two.
Second.
Then move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-six-three-five-two is approved.
Thanks, thanks.
You, you're not on the agenda number four. This is application number one-nine dash one-six-four-six-three for Foundation of the Rotary Club of Honolulu. Mr. Z. Baccaloni.
I don't think it's him.
Oh, yeah, I saw you getting up. Please come forward, sir.
You did say the Rotary Club of Honolulu.
Yes, sir, we did.
Sorry, I couldn't hear back there.
Thank you for all the good things you do for the community.
Thank you.
My name's Thomas Coyne. Uh, C-O-Y-N-E is my last name. I'm a member and represent the Rotary Club of Honolulu.
Commissioners?
Mr. Coyne, what type of event are you asking to have?
It's a beer festival at the Bishop Museum. We've done this, we've done this before. It's gone pretty smoothly.
How many, how, how many times have you done this event before?
This'll be the third time.
And at this venue?
Twice at this venue.
You had any issues at your event?
Besides people having a lot of fun, no issues. So it's been, it's run really well.
That's a great answer.
We have, yeah, it's a good event. And the money from this goes to, uh, the, uh, events that the Rotary Club of Honolulu does, which is community events and supporting a lot of different things.
I do have a quick question. Now, the plan that you provided to us, there's a big circle, um, in a, in paint, or something. What is that?
It's indicating exactly where the events would be taking place, on the field at Bishop Museum.
Okay, so a lot of the beer trailers, Anheuser trucks, and whatnot are outside of the circle, is that correct?
They're inside that circle.
This is the circle that we have. And there's trucks that are shown outside of the circle?
Those are food trucks.
The Anheuser truck is a food truck. The beer trailer is a food truck.
Um, it's, it's the serving area of the beer.
You wanna take a look at?
Yep.
I just, I don't have one in front of me.
Make sure that.
We're looking at her.
I'm sorry, would you mind if you was, be seated? It, it just, it makes it difficult to pick up the recording when you're away from your own mic. I'll let you have my, you can have my copy of the, uh-
I'll share my copy with you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay. Ice, trash, beer trailer. This is a circle that we drew before, which is where the beer would be served. Uh, there might be some trailers parked outside that are support, but they're not going to be, um, as far as I can tell.
Are they storing the kegs? Like, they're storing the kegs?
They were storing kegs, they were storing ice, they were storing, um, other liquor. But the serving area is, is pretty well laid out.
And you do have some kind of fencing or gate to, to guard that area?
Oh, yes, it's very well fenced. Do you want your copy of that?
Yes, please. Just wanna make sure you, nobody drinking outside the circle.
That's the shot question. Nobody drinks outside the circle, correct?
Got it. Yes, absolutely.
So the wristbands shock them when they go outside? Out of the area, or what happens there?
We don't have control what they do outside.
Okay, motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-four-six-three.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-six-four-six-three is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number five, transfer application number one-nine dash one-five-seven-three-one from Plank's.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Christina O'Hara, representing the applicant. I have one, um, correction to the report, or two apologies, I have two corrections to the report. On page two, um, while the temporary application, at the time the report was probably submitted, was pending, the temp permit was approved on April eighteen. And then on page three, for the hours of operation, um, it should be four AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, as opposed to daily.
Monday through Friday, you moved daily, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners.
And I suspect you have some questions for me, so I'll let you ask those before I go into the rest of it.
If you could, I mean, you read the investigative report, and we're reading what the investigators are telling us, if you could address that, that would be good.
Yes, certainly. So I realize the investigator's report, um, concludes that it's unclear whether the applicant meets the requirements for the transfer. Um, and there's also, uh, possible violation for transfer before the transaction closed. We did submit the services agreement prior to the transaction closing, and it was approved, um, through the administrative approval process, so I do have that. But we do acknowledge that the transaction itself closed before the transfer. Um, so if, you know, if that is a violation, we will pay the fine and we'll do our best to not do that again in the future.
We will discuss that matter on a different appearance. Thank you.
And then with respect to the management agreement, so the management agreement does actually say in paragraph three that the manager has sole and exclusive control, discretion and authority with respect to the operation of the wholesale dealership. The wholesale dealership is defined as the business operating at the property, and the property is essentially defined as a premises. So I believe the management agreement does actually show sufficient possession and control of the business.
I have a question of Ms. O'Hara.
Yes.
You know, we, we tend to see a lot of these, and, um, it's not my expertise to tear it apart, but then sometimes what's explained to us makes sense, why the business is staggered or formulated the way it is. And I think the thing that really draws my attention is that specifically, um, that the applicant, which is, what is it, pint-sized-
Hawaiian manager.
Yeah, the applicant doesn't get no proceeds from it, that it goes to a separate entity.
So that is similar to, as, like, if you were having like a hotel management agreement? So the proceeds from the hotel, you know, go to the hotel owner, and the manager gets a management fee, and that's the same arrangement here. The manager is paid a management fee, and the owner keeps the proceeds. That's not to say that the fee doesn't come out of the proceeds, or the fee isn't paid out of the income of the business generally, but the owner, uh, you know, takes in the income and then pays the manager separately based on their negotiated fee.
So pint-sized Hawaii LLC would be the manager, so to speak?
Pint-sized Hawaii LLC is the owner, and pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC is the manager.
But we have the manager applying rather than the owner?
Yes, similar to how the manager holds the hotel license for a hotel. The management company here is holding the liquor license for this business.
Now I understand, because I mean, majority in the hotel side, that, that is how we see things. Um, and sometimes, you know, there's a good explanation for it, on the holdings and how it's held and all that, all that good stuff.
My question is, to, um, Ms. Hamada, Susan Hamada?
No.
O'Hara.
O'Hara.
Oh, you're, you're asking where she is?
No, 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 I, I, okay, she is the manager, correct?
Yes, Sandra Hamada-
On both entities, on both LLCs?
No, Sandra Hamada is the manager of the manager entity, and there is a board of directors for the owner entity.
My confusion is, the two are separate LLCs.
So similar to how a hotel, there's a owner entity and a management entity, the owner is...
With the same officers and directors?
Uh, no, oftentimes they're different as well in, in a hotel structure. Your management company is often even an unrelated entity for hotels. For example, you know, a family could own the ground lease, but they engage Hilton to manage, so they would be unrelated. And some, but sometimes they are the same, and they just form two separate entities.
We are missing, Commissioner, we assure our expert legal commissioner on these type of issues. Thank you for your answers. Executive session.
Yeah, motion to convening to executive session, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? I, I vote aye, we're now in executive session. Okay, um, thank you very much, we're now back on the record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Applicants' representatives.
Yeah, Ms. O'Hara, first and foremost, thank you for keeping us on our toes here. But, there's a couple of things that we need to clarify. So, I'm gonna go slow, so that we can follow this, but I'm referring to exhibit two, page one, which is the business asset purchase and sell agreement. So in this agreement, that is dated as of January second, the, um, it is entered in with KDX LLC, who is considered to be the seller, and the purchaser is pint-sized Hawaii LLC. So that's executed January second. Under that same agreement, on exhibit two, page thirteen, there's a special provision that is on there specifically Article ten, Special Provisions, ten point two liquor license. In connection, and it reads as follows, "In connection with the purchase of the acquired asset seller, which is KDX, agreed to transfer its class three wholesale liquor license to purchaser, which is KDX, I'm, I'm sorry, which is pint-sized Hawaii LLC." Right, so one transaction. Now, we move forward and we float to January seventh, exhibit four, page one. It's KDX, who was previously the seller, is now transacting with Pi- pint-sized Hawaii in a services agreement.
Okay, pint-sized Hawaii manager.
I'm sorry, pint-sized Hawaii manager, who is, the licensee in this is considered to be KDX. That, the transaction happened January second already with the sale, but you're participating and executing a services agreement in which KDX already disposed or purchased, or they're no longer the owner anymore, correct?
No, so in ten point two, um, back to...
I'm sorry, what page?
Sorry, back to exhibit two, on page ten point two, the parties acknowledge that the transfer of the license needs to be approved by the city and county of Honolulu, and it was the party's intent with this paragraph, and I apologize if it wasn't written clearly, but to make it clear that we understand, and obviously no transfer has taken place until the commission approves. And that's what we were attempting to say in this paragraph, and I apologize if that is not clear.
Right, but we, we are taking action on what is agendaized, and that's a transfer from pint-sized Hawaii to a pi- pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC.
Oh, yes, so the, so the purchaser, and I think the best way to analogize this again is with the hotel structure. So the buyer of the business was the owner entity, pint-sized Hawaii, and they have since then formed and hired the manager entity, and have designated them to take the license. So that is why the services agreement was with pint-sized Hawaii manager as the manager for the business, or the owner, pint-sized Hawaii. But the purchase and sale agreements themselves are, are with the owner, so that's why the asset purchase agreement, the bill of sale, is all with the owner entity, because the owner owns all of that, it has simply engaged the manager to manage its assets.
We, we understand what you're trying to do, Ms. O'Hara. What we're saying is, we, we think that this should have been done in two separate tra- two separate agenda items, where we, you would ask us to approve the transfer from KDX to pint-sized Hawaii LLC, and then come back to transfer the license from that entity to pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC. And instead, you're going direct from KDX to pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC, and we think that's an error.
Okay, so, um, when we've, when I have brought transfers to the commission for our hotel transfers, the owner entity and the manager entity have been different, and the purchase and sale agreement would show the hotel being sold to the owner entity, but our application would be directly from the seller to the manager. We would never do it, we, and I have not done a two-step process, like what you're describing here. The, the own, the buyer in the purchase transaction has the right to designate somebody to take the license for them, and in this case, they designated the manager entity.
So you're asking us to both approve the transfer of the business from KDX to pint-sized Hawaii LLC, and also the management or services agreement between pint-sized Hawaii LLC and pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC? But your services agreement is between KDX and pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC?
So the services agreement is actually no longer necessary. That was to just carry us over the hump until we got our temp on April eighteenth. So the services agreement was our attempt to manage not having the temporary before the transaction closed, which I know we'll address at a later time when we appear for the violation. The management agreement is what would happen going forward, and that is between the owner and the manager entity. So at this point, I would say you could disregard the services agreement, and that was administratively approved. Previously, I could actually, if you want to see the approval.
No, we, we, we'll finish that.
No further, Chair, my concern is, we have no way to question Ms. Hamada.
Is there a reason why the applicant is not present today?
Uh, she actually is in Kona for a, another hearing, a liquor commission hearing there, but actually I have Tom Burke here, who can answer questions.
Who is he, in relation to the company?
He is, um, he is actually the owner of KDX, who is your seller, and he is currently employed by pint-sized Hawaii.
But not, he's not, so you don't have a representative for pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC?
No, not with me currently, like I said, unfortunately.
And I, and I know you keep referring back to hotel licenses, but this is not a hotel license. This is a wholesale general license. This is a distributor's license. This is a large distributor's license, okay? So, we want to make sure that whoever is the licensee, which is pi- who you're proposing to be, pint-sized Hawaii Manager LLC, we would like to see who's gonna be managing that company, because that's who the commission will be corresponding with, that's who any violations are going to be directed towards. And so we, we want to know who is actually going to be managing and responsible for the license, not necessarily just the company. So, um, do folks have any further questions?
No questions.
Okay, um, in order, uh, we would like to see Ms. Hamada here. She is listed as the manager for the license, for the proposed licensee. And we want to get, be able to do a little bit more reading, so that we can make sure that what we're doing is gonna be appropriate. So, um, that being said, motion to continue, agenda item five, transfer application number one nine dash one five seven three one for two weeks.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number five, transfer application number one nine dash one five seven three one is continued for two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing Ms. Hamada.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Calling agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one six one six four from Seventeen A Productions LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Neil Sian. On behalf of the applicant, seated to my right is Angelina Khan, who is a member of the applicant.
Thank you very much, Commissioners?
Motion to approve temp application number one nine dash one six one six four.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor? Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one six one six four is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck with your case.
Calling agenda item number seven, request number one nine dash one six four one one from Key Ventures LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioner, Members of the Commission, Bert Kawasaki, representing Key Ventures.
Commissioners?
Mr. Kow, what are your questions? You're proposed, you're proposing to extend for twenty by twenty outdoor in an alley?
Uh, twenty by one twenty?
Twenty, I'm sorry, twenty by one twenty.
Yes.
I have, we have your artist, your map, but it doesn't, it's not detailed as far as what, is, does this consist of a tent? Is there a stage out there, is a bar?
Uh, no, the event is actually going to take place, uh, the stage and everything, all the entertainment is only in space four four nine on the map. Um, and we just wanted a small beverage section gated off, enclosed, just for twenty-one and over, outside of that. So, inside of that four four nine space, there's no alcohol, non-alcoholic beverages, water, sodas, juices, kind of thing. If you want, if any of the attendees over twenty-one want to grab an alcoholic beverage, they need to exit and go into that gated area.
So it's kind of serving as your beer garden?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Kawasaki, next time, put it on your map.
Yes, I will be more elaborate, yes.
There are ten questions that come with that, because I'm like, what are we doing in an alley back there, right?
Yes, yes, actually, well, on my Xerox, I think I redlined just the, uh, twenty-one and over area, yeah.
Yeah, so if it's properly noted as a beer garden, and you got the barricades up, and that's the twenty-one and over thing, and now that you explain that, entertainment will be inside.
Will do, uh, uh, we should include stage and things.
Go and look out the back window.
Correct.
I looked down that alley, by the way.
Mr. Kawasaki, um, I, have you talked to your neighbors about this?
Yes, uh, we work closely and we, yeah, um, because it's, um, all the hours of this event are during their closed operations, you know, we do a lot of sharing of the parking spaces and things like that.
Okay, so they're not gonna call us to agree on it?
Correct, correct, um, and we worked it out with our landlord, who, you know, is the property manager of that alleyway and everything as well.
Okay, thank you.
So I just wanted to be clear again, there's gonna be no concert in the alleyway?
No, the entertainment is in the space. Um, there's a roll-up that'll be lifted up, so I'll help people in and out. So the entryway into the space is from the alley, and the beer garden is located in the alley gated off, uh, with barricades.
Okay, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six four one one.
Second.
The movement second, all those in favor? Aye. I vote aye, agenda item number seven, request number one nine dash one six four one one is approved. Calling agenda item number eight, request number one nine dash one six four three three from Tanquira El Rencero LLC, Mr. Gordo?
Good afternoon, Members of the...
Good to see you over here.
Nice to see you again, too. I'm here on behalf of Tanquira El Rencero.
A pleasant surprise, did you come all the way down from Waiwan? Oh, that's your client, I'm sorry.
We would like to withdraw this application.
Oh, of course, thank you very much. You're a very smart attorney. Don't favor events in commercial parking lots.
It's, um, I think this event is referred to as mariachi in Bebo.
No, it's Mother's Day event.
There you go, it's Mother's Day.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, Estadio.
Um, so we need a motion for that, yeah?
Yes.
Uh, motion to withdraw, request number one nine dash one six four three three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Uh, agenda item number eight, request number one nine dash one six four three three is approved for withdrawal. Right?
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you.
We're going to, uh, uh, A, I'm sorry, A, A, yes, very good, thank you, Mr. Riker.
Sorry, Mr. Me.
Uh, A, A, request number one nine dash one six four four three from HM Tavasaw and Associates.
James Tennant, on behalf of HM Tavasaw and Associates, EBA, Hank's Cafe, Honolulu.
Commissioners?
I do have a updated map for investigative report.
That'd be great. You have copies for us?
Color a lot easier to see.
Uh, hold on, the copies are in the...
No, he's, he's holding them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Tennant, it shows here that your street closure request is pending, or street use permit?
The street use permit actually was approved as of yesterday.
Okay.
So, Mr. Tennant, if I could recall correctly, Cinco de Mayo, I believe, and I could be corrected on this. Let me ask you this, is there gonna be any entry fee charge to attend this event?
No, it's free and open to the public. The only fee would be for a wristband for the multi-pub crawl that happens after the event.
That happens after the event?
Yes, in all the businesses surrounding the, the site.
Because your request is till ten PM, correct?
Only till ten.
So the pub crawl will occur after ten PM?
Ten PM to two AM is the pub crawl. In our events, two PM to ten PM.
And you came with a similar request last year, but you withdrew the request?
For two thousand eighteen, correct. And then two thousand seventeen was our last event in Chinatown.
So we're gonna take another attempt on this, this year, with the Cinco de Mayo?
We are.
What, so, let's run it down and let's talk about what's gonna happen here.
Well, first of all, I mean, it's actually on its fourteenth year. So, uh, this year being that it falls on a Sunday, we've decided, you know, from two PM to ten PM, from two to five, will be more family-oriented, that's why we've added the keiki zone, if you look up at the top of Wai and Nuuanu. Um, it's a lot smaller footprint as well, we don't, we're not programming Hotel Street with vendors or anything, so we're keeping everything on Nuuanu.
Will, will Hotel Street be closed?
Hotel Street will be closed.
And also Pawahi Street, or that's gonna be open?
Wai Street will be open.
Okay.
So in order to close Nuuanu between Wai and King, you pretty much automatically close Hotel.
Right, okay.
A Hotel won't, won't close till four PM, so the buses don't have to... Uh, Hotel won't, won't close till four P M., so the buses don't have to be rerouted during the peak afternoon time.
Got it.
That's the two, if you see on the map, uh, HPD had us put two officers there to make sure, uh, traffic apply, apply-
And buses are on Sunday's schedule anyway.
On Sunday's schedule.
Right.
It looks like a different event, Mr. Tennant, I'll give you that.
Yeah.
I, yeah.
It's been a long year, a long two years since then, and the tour can didn't look like this.
No, I've taken advice and that's why I wanted to give you a color one, a lot easier to read.
We appreciate that.
I like the kid zone. Um, I don't know, I, I thought the mechanical bull was taken that day, but I guess.
I like the HPD officers in their dress blue suit. Very nice. And there'll be six of them, correct, at the perimeter?
There'll actually be eight.
There'll be eight.
So there'll be five for the perimeter and they requested we do three more for extra security.
Okay, yes. So, only the five are listed, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, um, last question, so is there gonna be egress allowed for pa, for pedestrians that don't want to attend the event but want to utilize the sidewalks that go down here or?
Yes, sidewalks will be kept clear.
Sidewalks will be kept clear for pedestrians.
Correct.
And it will be no fare to use that public sidewalk, correct?
Yes, it will be, yes. That is in our DTS permit as well. That is, that is correct, sir.
Correct? Yes. We did have some issues with that in a previous event. Am I not correct?
That is correct.
And I'm assuming that you have spoken with the affected businesses on Nuanu?
We have, yes.
Okay, and is there any issue that we need to know about?
We've got support. I've also been to the neighborhood board and for the first time, seven out of the eight are in favor of our event.
Terrific.
Was that the kid zone or the mechanical bull? Which is salted? I think it was the keiki zone.
I think our color detailed map.
Yes, yes, we all like good maps.
Was very, yes.
This is a very good map and I'm, I'm glad we're off to a good start here, Mr. Tennant.
Thank you.
Hopefully it will be a very good event.
I agree.
Mm-hmm. Between two to, what is it, two to ten, so, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
All right, this is it. Yep, good.
All right, here we go. Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six four four three.
Second.
Then move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item number eight, A, uh, request number one nine dash one six four four three is approved.
All right, Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one six four nine one from Mr. Terrence M. Lee. Good afternoon, Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairs, Commissioner, um, Terry Lee for the Request Store. And, uh, I'm happy to describe the proposed, uh, business, the Commissioner's, uh, excellent plan.
We would love that, Mr. Lee.
So it, it's a, uh, family-oriented, local-style restaurant. Um, the, uh, it's gonna feature, uh, I guess the cuisine is very similar to the side street, that type of food. The chef is a gentleman named Mike Leslie, the otherwise known as Chef Miko. And he's a, uh, protege of Roy Yamaguchi. I, I've known him a long time. He started out as a dishwasher, worked his way up to executive chef. So he will be our chef, um, myself, uh, Reiner Kumbrock, who's a retired president of Roy's, is also a partner. Um, so we'll be actively involved in overseeing the management of the business. Um, Kalanui family, uh, are, are involved primarily, uh, from the perspective of the music side of the business. It's gonna feature, uh, a lot of contemporary Hawaiian-style music. So, uh, Caleb Kalanui is probably the most famous of, of the family and Caleb is the lead singer of a very successful local band called The Green. And so Caleb and his brothers, Micah and AJ, who are also musicians, will be focusing on the entertainment portion. They'll do, uh, you know, casual acoustic-type music during the dinner hour. And then they will probably two or three times a week have later-night entertainment, um, again, uh, local-style Hawaiian music, contemporary Hawaiian music.
Well, I like the name. That's my sister's name. Incidentally, she's named after a Beamer Brothers song, Moani Sweet Moani. So. A good name. It's good, yeah.
Very nice.
Explanation.
Vice Chair.
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six four nine one.
Second.
Then move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one six four nine one is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Lee.
Sorry for the wait.
Calling agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one six five one four from Midpac Petroleum LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Mr. Wright.
Gabriel Prenz on behalf of Midpac Petroleum LLC.
This is a request to withdraw, a request.
And I have a clarification, if I could, I won't take up too much time, but, um, so this was a prior request for a merger that was set to occur January first, two thousand eighteen. Actually never occurred, the, they just set it off. Um, and one of the reasons we're doing a formal withdraw is because of the licenses were issued under the, what was going to be the surviving entity, so we're just kinda need to reverse that so that it, it, the license, new licenses reflect what they actually are. Unfortunately, you'll be seeing me again in a week or two because merger's back on and, uh, it's gonna change slightly, but I understand because of the sunshine law, I can't just get that done today.
You can, you work for your money, Mr. Prenzo.
Yeah, so. It's fine with me, uh, but anyway, I just wanted-
The gas price doesn't go up.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up so you don't wonder too much why I'll be back doing a similar thing.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six five one four.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one six five one four is approved.
Um, if I could just put something, uh, briefly on the record, because the previously approved merger has been withdrawn, the licenses will need to be reissued in the original name.
In the original.
Uh, Commissioner does not need to take action on that particular items.
That would be ideal.
Understood, so that application will be under the original name, correct?
Uh, it will re, will restore the license to the original pre-merger name.
In this case, Midpac Petroleum LLC.
Because, uh, the merger approval has been withdrawn, was not completed.
So noted.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to mention that in a motion? I mean, he hasn't, no?
No.
None either, okay.
I mean, the, the fact that you undid the merger restores it, uh, to the, the original licensee, uh, entity, so.
Okay, so let's move on to agenda item number eleven, request number one nine dash one six five one five.
Gabriel Prenz on behalf of H I U Retail LLC.
And this is the same situation?
It is the same situation. We have, uh, previously approved merger. This one was set to go forward on August first. It never happened. We just would like to formally withdraw it and, uh, allow the renewed licenses to refer it back to H I U Retail LLC.
And you'll state for the record that it goes back to the original licensee?
Yeah, correct. Or I can do it or, or Miss Prenz can.
I'll, I'll prefer that.
On me?
No.
You, nice try.
Okay.
You want somebody to go after what you go wrong.
Yeah, yeah, all right, yeah. So, so the formal request is for, um, the administration to be able to administratively revert the licenses that were recently issued in connection with the renewal to H I U Retail LLC.
Thank you. Misses?
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six five one five, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, request number one nine dash one six five one five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twelve. Uh, request number one nine dash one six five two three from Neil T. Gota, on behalf of Taz, Eun, USA.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Neil Gota, appearing on behalf of Tamahime USA, Inc. To my right is Alicia Marotz, a representative. Uh, for the record, I would just like to add, this is the former Sorrento's, uh, Tapata Ilikae location and to my understanding, it's been probably a little less than a year since the prior license was terminated.
Could we have the spelling of her last name, please?
M A R O T Z.
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve, application number one nine dash one six five two three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, request number one nine dash one six five two three is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six five two eight, Wayne Luke.
Yes, for the record, reflect Wayne Luke as the Request Store, uh, this particular license just did not renew for this fiscal year. And the, the person that's taken over currently operates at the Cooney Restaurant in Tapata.
Thank you very much. Misses?
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one six five two eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one six five two eight is approved. Commissioner's gonna have a type of action on agenda items number fourteen through twenty-eight?
Yes, Chair. Uh, motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items fourteen through twenty-eight inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision and order, agenda items number fourteen through twenty-eight inclusive are approved. Now, move in, please.
Good afternoon, Wayne Neely, Deputy Corporation Counsel, here for the, caring for the prosecution for tonight's adjudication items.
Very good. Calling agenda item number fourteen, Abu Ramen, Mr. Luke. It's not you?
Oh, no, 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 twenty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, really don't. I knew that, I just wanted to make sure. Everybody was paying attention. Calling agenda item number twenty, I saw you sitting over there, Luke, I just. Number, calling agenda item number twenty-nine, Kamalu Market.
Licensee requested a continuance to June sixth, two thousand nineteen. Um, I have no objection.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-nine to June sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-nine is continued to June sixth, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number thirty, Amano Liquor, Inc.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Governor Nakoba, representing Amano Liquor. Uh, to my right is the owner, Chow Tran. Uh, last name is spelled T R A N.
Wave reading of the charge?
Yes.
How would you like to plead, Mr. Nakoba?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
Uh, this is a first violation. I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
And for the record, this is a, uh, violation for sale to a minor, correct? Mr. Nakoba?
Yes, um, on the dating question, um, Mr. Tran, uh, did furnish the alcohol. He said that he looked at the, he looked at the-
Yeah, I took it the license, but like, something I, I was, I'm sorry, I never take the gamble, that's fine. I really sorry, never happening again.
They have, they've since put in signage, um, at the counter on a wall to make sure that he checks every single time. They've also done, they're gonna be doing some training to make sure that every staff member, um, knows that they need to check every single time, no fail. And that signage is there. I've, I actually saw it and made sure that they put it up in the store.
Ms. Neely, was this a vertical ID that was presented?
Uh, correct, it's a critical point.
Mr. Tran, do you know what a vertical ID means?
Yes.
What does that mean?
It's a, it's a ID. Like the ID.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like this, instead of like this. What does this mean? When it's like this, instead of like this, what does it mean?
Yeah, we asked of this.
Yeah, but if it's not like that, what does that mean though?
If it's vertical and it's up and down.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so you look at the date, so vertical also means that it's, they're not.
So, Mr. Tran, so that you know for future reference?
Yeah.
When it's like this?
Yeah.
It means when they got it, they were not twenty-one. So that means you should be looking at those extra careful. Because that means when they got the license from the government, they were not twenty-one, not old enough to purchase alcohol.
Yes.
So if you are looking at one like this, if you don't, if you have a doubt, you should be refusing sale.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Let's hope it doesn't happen again. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-one, Ninja Market.
Chairman, to my right is Mr. Ituro Mori, M O R, spelling has been provided. Uh, he is the manager for Nigia Market. In the record, reflect Wayne Luke as counsel, the wave reading of the charges enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea, second.
Then move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-one, the, uh, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
Uh, this is a first violation of sale of liquor to a minor. I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Lu?
In this particular incident, uh, the cashier followed all procedures until the point whereby he checked an ID punched in his birthday into the, as he explained to Mr. Mori. He said it was too crowded and he was just confused.
That's not a good excuse.
Yeah, I'm so sorry about that. Um, so he must have, actually, his, um, uh, birthday shown on the ID. But he accidentally, um, punched in his birthday. But I, so, um, I retrain, retrain all the cashiers and they explain, um, um, selling alcohol to minor is a crime, um, which can have lasting effects on both themselves and the minor purchasing alcohol. So, yeah, I'm so sorry about that.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars, second.
Then move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-one, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-two.
Uh, licensee has requested a continuance to June sixth, two thousand nineteen. I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item thirty-two, Brothers Market, to June sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-two is continued to June sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number thirty-three, MK Market.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, my name is Ashley Mun, M U N, and I'm here to translate and represent my dad, Byong Tu Mun. B Y O N G T U, M U N.
Thank you. The charge, please, Ms. Neely.
Uh, honor about, honor about February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam Tom, Tomus, at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii Revise Statutes.
How would you like to plead?
We accept the charge.
Motion to approve, uh, the plea.
Second.
Then move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-three, the licensee, uh, accepts the, uh, citation.
Ms. Neely, your recommendation?
Uh, this is a first violation for adjudication purposes. Um, there were two previous in two thousand two and two thousand eleven. I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Ms. Mun, what happened?
Um, so my dad said the worker, she got distracted, which wasn't, it's not an excuse, but she, she didn't check the ID correctly. Uh, but she is terminated from his business and, um, my dad does, um, wants to apologize to the commission and we assure you that this will not happen again.
Ms. Neely, was a vertical ID presented?
Um, the clerk did not ask for an ID in this case.
So the clerk has been let go. Have you folks spoken to the other clerks about this incident?
Yes, well, whenever he hires a, hires a worker, he always, um, makes sure that they know- Yes, well, whenever he hires a, hires a worker, he always, um, makes sure that they know how crucial it is to check IDs because, uh, I made the same mistake, and, but I always check ID now, but he, you know, we, we know, and he makes sure that the workers know how important it is, and, yeah.
Yes, you folks have been there for a while, right? MK Market?
Yes.
Been there how long?
Uh, it's five, seven years now.
All right, well, we hope we not, we don't see you back for something like this again.
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-three, uh, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, and thank you for coming.
Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Twenty-One Market.
In a record reflect Wayne Luke's counsel, uh, to me, to my right is the president, and, uh, she has to pronounce her own name, I can't. Just pronounce it. You're, you're ready?
Okay, um, my name is Ming Han, and last name X U E.
Thank you.
Uh, we have reading on the charges, enter plea guilty.
Okay, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-four, the guilty plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
Uh, this is a first violation for adjudication purposes. There were two prior, uh, sale of liquor, sale of liquor to minor violations in two thousand two and two thousand six. So I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Luke?
Yes, in this particular case, uh, it's, he is the, um, the manager in charge. It's a family operation. Her, her husband works, her father and her mother works. And she has trained them, you know, what to do, and for the last two years, everything has been all right. And the, this particular incident, she had her mother went back to China for an emergency, and they had another person helping them out, and this is the person that was sold liquor to the minor, and that person is no longer working with them now.
Good help is hard to find, huh?
Her mother found.
And they, you, you, are, you represented that this has been, she's been the owner for two years? So she was not present, or their family was not owners when the two other violations occurred?
Yeah, that was about ten, ten?
Ten, only ten years.
There's about three owners that, three owners in between that, I think.
Thank you. All right, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-four, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-five, Young's Wine and Spirits.
To my right is Jeffrey Kwan, he is the manager. He is president and counsel, Wayne Luke, we have reading on the charges, enter plea of guilty.
Motion to accept the plea.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-five, the guilty plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is a second violation, I recommend a penalty of two thousand dollars.
When did the prior violation occur?
Twenty seventeen.
Mr. Kwan?
Yes.
What happened?
Um, so I've been the manager for one year, so my dad is the owner. Um, the cashier that, so pretty much they sent it undercover, and then she didn't, she didn't even ask for ID. I was in the back for like three, two minutes, and then by the time I came out, they're already writing up a, so yeah. And then, yeah, and then after that, I let her go, because there's, yeah.
And, um, are you, have your other cashiers been made aware of this?
Yes, they've all been, they've all been there for like two, three years, they've never, we've always been on it. The one that happened last year, I'm not sure what happened, that was my dad, yeah.
All right. Motion to approve the recommended fine of two thousand dollars.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-five, the recommended fine of two thousand dollars is approved.
Mr. Kwan, please let your family know, we don't want to see you folks back for these.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, uh, KS Mai Tai Market, Mai Tai. Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Ling Yang Wu on behalf of KS Mai Tai Market.
The charges honor about February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold, served, or furnished intoxicating liquor to a minor, or allowed consumption of intoxicating liquor by a minor, specifically Liam Tomus, at the licensed premises in violation of section two eighty-one seventy-eight B one A of the Hawaii Revise Statutes.
How would you like to plead? No contest. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-six, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely?
Uh, this is a first violation for adjudication purposes. There were seven previous ones between nineteen ninety-four and two thousand eleven.
Okay.
But that may have been a different order. Um, so I reckon, I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
Ms. Wu, what happened?
Uh, I, um, earlier this morning, I submitted a written letter, um, for explanation, so I think it's better I just read it through. Um, the, uh, during the time that the violation occurred, the employee was alone in the store in the middle of the delivery and assisting customers. The employee was distracted by the delivery and did not do their due diligence. The employee has, uh, accepted full responsibility and sincerely apologized for their actions, and is exceedingly work helpful in performing all their duties.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-six, the recommended fine, one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-seven, Coco Cove, Ms. Neely?
Um, licensee requested a continuance to May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, I have no objection.
Thank you.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-seven, Coco Cove, to May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-seven is continued to May sixteen, two thousand nineteen. Agenda item number thirty-eight, Foodland Farms.
Um, licensee requested a continuance to May sixteen, two thousand nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-eight, Foodland Farms, to May sixteen, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-eight, um, is continued to May sixteen, two thousand nineteen. Calling agenda item number thirty-nine, Food Pantry Express.
Um, again, licensee requested a continuance to May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-nine, Food Pantry Express, to May sixteen, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirty-nine is continued to May sixteen, two thousand nineteen. Thank you, Ms. Neely. And agenda item number forty, legislative update. And agenda item number forty-one, uh, we all.
I like how you freeze right over now.
Y'all know what happened.
It's over.
And it's over now.
It's over, you know what I mean? We'll catch the next session. Calling agenda item number forty-one, has anybody got the administrative matters meeting adjourned?